And now, from the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs and KFAM, the Town Hall Question and Answer portion of Stars and Chevrons.
My name is Cadet Second Class Spencer Tyken.
And my name is Cadet First Class Damian Ashley. We will be your hosts for this evening's event.
General Welsh, Chief Cody, thank you for joining us today on behalf of the United States Air Force Academy and KAFA Radio. Our first question comes from Cadet First Class Connor Mags. Cadet Mags is the Athletic Officer for Squadron Thirty.
Thank you, sir, thank you, chief, for accepting my question. Sir, my question is for you. Do you foresee lieutenants being commissioned today flying primarily manned aircraft or RPAs 20 years down the road?
Thanks Connor, great question. I'm a little worried about my voice here because after that intro, I think I need to talk more like this. Five percent of our Air Force aircraft fleet right now is unmanned. Five percent. It's not that dramatic a change. Yes, we'll be flying manned aircraft 20 years from now. We'll still be delivering F-35s, KC-46s, and long-range strike bombers 20 years from now, and those are all manned platforms.
Thank you, sir.
Sure thing, thank you.
Our next question comes from Cadet First Class Ryan Gorley. Cadet Gorley is the Director of Operations for Cadet Group Four.
Thank you, sir, thank you, chief, for taking my question. Sir, my question's for you, General Welsh. The academy used to be rich in traditions that would raise cadet morale, you know, different events that we would do to have a good time and for an identity of the cadet wing. What was the culture change that caused those traditions to sort of start to disappear?
Which traditions are we talking about?
Maybe, so, taking the hill, sort of. I know that was around here when you were here, sir. First shirt, first snow, maybe that wasn't here when you were here. There's...
Let me give you an example of what happened. We'll take first shirt, first snow as an example. Now, we used to do that when I was a cadet. And what you'd do is just take your shirt downstairs and literally throw them in the snow. That was it. Then it progressed to, let's undress them before we throw them in the snow. And at one point in time, while I was the commandant, we actually had a squadron hang their first shirt out the window in like a bunch of reinforced laundry bags while he was taped up like a mummy. And then they stacked snow underneath him to drop him into. Now, imagine if they hadn't got the snow stacked in time. We keep doing things like this to ourselves, gang. You know, we do something silly, the rules are probably going to change. So, there needs to be a little bit of structure to this stuff. And some of the things that we call traditions today really haven't been going on very long. They may have started five years ago. A lot of the traditions that I hear about from cadets today, when I was a cadet, they weren't, we never heard of them before. And so, I guess what I'd offer to you is, find the things that make sense, find the things you can be proud of, and keep them going. Nobody at the academy's going to stop you from doing that. Just don't do the stupid stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Our third question comes from Cadet Second Class Samuel Rose. Cadet Rose is an Element Leader in Cadet Squadron Ten.
General Welsh, Chief Cody, thank you both for being here today. My question for the general and the chief is this. How prepared is the US Air Force in terms of responding to potential cyber attacks from foreign nations, especially China? Because so far, the measures we've seen have largely been reactive rather than preventative.
As prepared as we can be, but not prepared enough. It's not just the Air Force, it's not just any of the services. The nation's not very well-prepared. And there's a couple of really good reasons for that. One is that it's much more cost-effective to attack than defend in the cyber arena. So, you can spend millions of dollars and years of effort to defend something, and it can be disrupted by, literally, by a nineteen-year-old with a fast laptop and a quick brain, and developing a new and unusual way of applying new technology to create problems. This is a real difficult area for us. We have a lot of people working it very hard. The Air Force is just part of the joint effort under US Cyber Command to work defensive issues. And we have actually done an awful lot of work in this arena. But it's a very difficult task. And so, we're not good enough. We probably never will be. The key will be, can we get good enough at protecting the things we have to protect? And just putting the others at risk, because we can't afford to absolutely protect all of it.
No, I think I would just amplify what General Welsh had to say. We have, you know, tremendous airmen, cyber warriors out there every day defending the networks and enabling air power around the world. But it is under constant attack. And it's, the challenge with that is, is every time we fix a problem or identify a potential vulnerability, there is somebody out there trying to exploit or create the new vulnerability.
I would also be very hesitant to jump to the conclusion that because people successfully hack into whatever in the US, that the rest of the world is ahead of us in the cyber arena. Because that is not true. And I'll just leave the rest of that to your imagination.
Thank you, sir, thank you, chief.
Sir, chief, our next question originated from social media and will be read by Cadet First Class Jacqueline Solis of Cadet Squadron Three.
Good afternoon. This question comes from Captain Bryce Johnson. And he wants to know, what do you believe the Air Force gains by its officers finishing a degree before finishing their first or second operational tours? And what that brings to the Air Force?
Yeah, thanks Jacqueline. Bryce, good question. Let me answer it by just making a statement. I'm working right now on a message that goes out to all the officers in the Air Force that will describe what's going to be required for promotion to different ranks. And what's going to be required for a master's degree is that you have to have one before you meet the Colonel's Board. Before that, promotion is about job performance. And only job performance.
And one last thing. What advice can you give for young LTs coming out of the academy, or just young LTs anywhere, getting, advice on getting a master's degree?
It depends. I mentioned job performance is the key. If you're a young engineer, and you're competitively selected to go to AFIT and get a master's degree, and it makes you a better engineer, and you're confident that, well, go get the degree and become a better engineer. But we're going to reward you in terms of jobs and promotions based on your performance as an engineer, not the fact that you have a degree in your closet. It's not the degree, it's the performance that results. That make sense? That's the idea. So, getting a bunch of degrees as a major, when I want you to be a technical expert in flying the F-16, or the C-130, or being a cop, or whatever you do, don't reward the degree, reward the job performance. And if a degree helps you with that, then go for it. Or if some people just want to educate themselves, and they want to continue an educational path, and they want to get degrees for their own benefit over time, I'd encourage you to do it. But that's not what the Air Force is going to reward you for.
Thank you, sir. Our next question comes from Cadet Second Class Daniel Jones. Cadet Jones is a member of the Cadet Honor Guard and Cadet Squadron Eighteen.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, chief, for accepting my question. My question is, with the future of the Air Force seeming to head towards multi-role aircraft rather than single-mission planes, at what point do we decide, as an Air Force, that fiscal responsibility trumps mission effectiveness? For example, the argument I've heard multiple times is that you could outfit a KC-135 to replace a KC-10, but you can't necessarily outfit a F-35 to replace an A-10 with its, essentially unmatched time over target and armament to do its job.
So, was the question about, should we keep the A-10, or is it about, single versus multi-role platforms? Or both?
Mostly, single versus multi-role platforms, with specifically the example of the A-10 being the one I've heard the most.
Okay. First, let me make sure everybody understands why we're having a discussion about single versus multi-role platforms. The issue right now is, we have a future plan for the Air Force that we cannot afford. And the Department of Defense now, or the next nine and a half year, nine and one-half years, has to find 1.3 trillion dollars in reductions to our plan budget. That's going to leave a bruise, a big bruise, everywhere in the Department of Defense. So, the Air Force put together some guiding principles for how we did our planning to reduce our part of that bill. And one of those guiding principles was, if we have two platforms that can do the same mission, whether they can do it as well as each other isn't the point. If one of those platforms can do other things well, then if it comes down to a choice, we get rid of the single-mission platform. It makes business sense to do it that way. So, that's where the guideline came from. Now, for the A-10, the A-10 is the best close-air support platform in the world. I've got about a thousand hours flying them. I love the A-10, I love everything about it. The A-10 today flies about 25% of our close-air support sorties in Afghanistan. Seventy-five percent are flown by other Air Force platforms and other service platforms who do the mission pretty darn well. I flew the F-16 as well. I've got over a thousand hours in that airplane. I flew a lot of close-air support. You can do it. Not as well as the A-10. But you can take that F-16, you can do air superiority, you can do deep strike, you can do all kinds of things you cannot do with the A-10. So, if it's a matter of giving one up because we don't have enough money to keep them both, it makes logical sense to keep the one you can do more with. It's a resource-driven principle. Do we want to get rid of the A-10? Absolutely not. But to keep it, somebody's got to show me the money. And the same thing's true of every other platform. We're looking at everything in our inventory. Not just A-10s, everything. Every modernization program, every platform, everything. This is a big deal, this resource battle we're in right now. It's a big deal to the nation, to all the services, and to the Air Force. So, that's where the discussion's coming from. Nobody has evil intent here. The question for our contribution to the Joint Force is, what else do we give up instead? ISR? Airlift? Air superiority? Command and control? Nobody wants to give up anything. But we're going to have to. So, that's where we are. Fair?
Thank you, sir.
Our next question originates from social media and will be read again by Cadet First Class Jacqueline Solis.
So, this next question comes from Master Sergeant Dan Douglas, and it is for both Chief Cody and General Welsh. He's a reservist at Peterson, and he would like to know how you plan to leverage the reserve component in the years to come, and whether or not we plan to use them more after budget cuts, or if we plan to use them less.
So, I appreciate the question. I think we're having those discussions, and I wouldn't say it's a more or less equation. It's really about determining, from the Air Force perspective, where do we have the capability and capacity? You know, what's the right balance? And we have a couple of things going on. The chief, General Welsh, has put a total task force team together that is providing some recommendations, as well as there's a commission that is looking at this right now for our Air Force. But it really is about striking the right balance within the resources that we're going to have. But we have to keep, at the forefront of the discussion is, is, one, those core capabilities that we have to have as an Air Force. And where best to have the capacity with those capabilities is, understanding that we have to have access to that capability. And that's the challenge when you just say, hey, we think it's cheaper to put some of that capability and capacity all into the reserve component. Because if we don't have access to it to respond in the way that the nation may ask the Air Force to respond to, then we have the wrong balance. And that really, so it's a pretty in-depth discussion that we're having as an Air Force of, really, how do you strike that right balance? And some things fundamentally have to change within all of the components to make that work.
You can't have a strong Air Force without having a strong reserve component, both guard and reserve. You can't have a strong guard and reserve without having a strong active-duty component. So, we've got to figure out where the balance is. We can put more into the reserve component. We're trying to do that in multiple mission areas, because it is cheaper over time to do it that way. And while we have resource constraints, we should be looking at doing that. How far you can go in each mission area is different. You can put more airlift into the guard and reserve, for example, which we have already done. There's a greater percentage of our mobility force in the guard and reserve than there is in the active component. We can probably put more, and should. In some of the other mission areas, you can't do it quite so much, because there are operational impacts that it has that make it non-doable past a certain point. So, what we're trying to figure out is, how far can you go? And we'll go all the way to that point, and then we'll stop. Now, we're integrating staffs, air staffs, match com staffs everywhere, with guardsmen and reservists. You know, as far as I'm concerned, on the air staff itself, part of the command section team is the Director of the International Guard and the Chief of the Air Force Reserve. They're not part of the staff, they're part of the command section of the United States Air Force. So, we'll try and make small corrections like that, that over time will have an impact. We just have to value what everybody brings to this fight. This is one Air Force. And out where the fighting happens, that's what it looks like.
Our next question comes from Cadet First Class Siani Ellison. Cadet Ellison is a member of the parachute team, Wings of Blue, and has 385 jumps to her name.
General Welsh, Chief Cody, thank you for taking the time to be with us today. My question is, what has been the most challenging and yet the most rewarding aspect of your career? Do you have a story that goes with it? Sorry to put you on the spot.
The chief's never been challenged, but while he's, let's see if he can come up with something here.
So, I'll be honest with you. You know, where you sit, and you'll find this as you all progress in your Air Force careers, kind of where you sit is where you stand. So, you know, at every point, I would look back at my career, and there were challenges, and you had to overcome them. And at the time, they might have seemed to be the greatest challenge that you could ever possibly face, until you move and sit somewhere else, and your scope broadens a little bit, and you see things from a different perspective. And then you realize that wasn't necessarily the most difficult thing you had, you know, were going to have to face. So, I'll be honest, you know, right now, I mean, it's certainly, you know, a great privilege and honor to serve as a Chief Mass Sergeant in the Air Force. But this is some pretty big challenges we face as, coming into this position, as we go into sequestration, as we look at the fiscal crisis, as we continue to demand such significant things of our Air Force and our airmen, specifically, and their families. And how we get that right into the future with the level of uncertainty is probably the greatest challenge I've ever had to face. How do we ensure that our airmen understand, and General Welsh is committed to this, Mrs. Welsh, Athena, on how can we continue to relate to our airmen and their families, that we are committed to them, while at the same time doing what our nation expects us to do? And that is, maintain a credible Air Force that has the capabilities necessary to do what the nation's going to ask you to do. I can honestly tell you, I have never, in my, you know, nearly thirty years of service, had to face that type of dynamic. So, it's the greatest challenge. The good news is, is we absolutely have the right team in place to work through that challenge, to figure out the best solution, given the hand that we've been dealt. So, the good news is, we'll remain the world's greatest Air Force on the outset of this, but it is not going to be without some significant challenge.
I think on the professional side, the biggest challenge has been, every place I ever walked into, every new squadron, every new job, I looked around and went, I'm not as talented as these people are. I mean, you're going to be astonished by how good the people are in our Air Force, if you haven't already seen it. And so, I would always walk in and go, man, I'm not worthy to be with these folks. And the reward was, if you work hard at it, and you pay attention, you learn, you get to a point where you feel like you're a respected part of the team. And when you realize that, it's an incredibly rewarding thing, and it happens over and over and over again as you move around the Air Force. On the personal side, the biggest challenge is trying to figure out how you remind your family constantly that they are your top priority. Because you're working hard, you're deploying, you're going remote, you're doing all the things that this profession demands of you, and that they have signed up along with you to do. And it's easy to forget that your priorities are at home. And so, the challenge is reminding yourself often enough to remind them, and convince them you mean it. And the reward is, one day, looking back on it and going, wow, they actually enjoyed that experience. How did that happen? And they feel like you were involved in their life, you did care, you did remind them. That's a huge reward, personally.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Cadet Niaga Oglesby. Cadet Niaga Oglesby is the Vice President of the Way of Life Committee here at the United States Air Force Academy.
Good afternoon, General Welsh, Chief Cody. My question to you is, what do you think is the most important lesson we should be learning here at the academy to prepare ourselves to be officers in the Air Force, as we're facing challenges like sequestration and our changing roles in foreign policy?
People matter. All people. Everybody plays a part. Everybody's critically important. Learn about the strengths of the people in your squadron. Pay attention to how people learn, how they think, how they develop, how they listen or not. Learn about how you relate to people. Make sure you understand what body language you have that aggravates people, that intimidates people, that convinces people that you're not paying attention. All of us have those kind of things, we have to learn about ourselves. People are the difference in this Air Force. You're going to be asked to lead them. So, start learning how to do that here. And it's not the big glamorous jobs necessarily that lets you do that all the time. Sometimes it's being a great element leader, or a great element NCO, and really getting to know your people. Learn what makes them tick. Convince them that you care about them and about their future. If you do that here, you'll carry that into the Air Force, and you'll be successful starting day one. I promise you. People are at the core of our success, and your job is going to be to lead them.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Cadet Second Class Patrick Dunkle from Cadet Squadron Twenty-One, and I'm currently one of the wing training NCOs for the cadet wing. General, chief, it's an amazing opportunity to be able to be here and speak to you. My question is for both of you. General, about a month ago, you spoke to the Air Force Association, and you talked about the problems of the Air Force. You mentioned that our force is better trained, better educated than we've ever been, and we need to be empowered more than we've ever been before. My question, general, on your side is, what are we as an Air Force doing wrong to not empower our airmen? And what could we change about how we are operating as an Air Force? And chief, for the enlisted side, what are the officers specifically doing that are not empowering the enlisted airmen of the Air Force?
Yeah, I didn't say we were doing anything wrong. There's a big difference between, we need to empower people more, and saying we're doing it wrong. Resources are an issue for us. We need to think of new and innovative ways to do our job. We need to be more efficient and still maintain operational capability. And everybody's got good ideas on how to do that, not just commanders. Nobody understands the missions at the functional level of our Air Force better than the people doing that function, whether they're captains, majors flying airplanes, or whether they're staff sergeants fixing them. They are the experts, and we all have to be willing to listen to their ideas on how to do it better. If we're going to get more efficient as an Air Force, everybody has to be part of the solution. Our enlisted force is incredibly talented, and they are now much more educated and trained than they've been in the past. And they have the capacity to offer ideas and approaches that you and I would not think of. And we just got to be willing to listen. Every supervisor, every level, officer or enlisted, has got to be willing to listen to the people who work for them. They're the experts, pay attention. And where it makes practical sense, and we have the resources, let's do the business the way they think it ought to be done, if it makes sense. But don't discount their ideas because they're not the commander, or the officer, or the chief, whatever it is we think is the place those decisions ought to be made. There's huge contributions being made around our Air Force every day by guys with two stripes on their arm.
I would just add to that, so, one, I don't believe that, you know, the enlisted force doesn't feel that they have the support of our officer leadership. I think if you could just bridge a little bit here to kind of further amplify what General Welsh had to say is, our enlisted force are technical experts at what they do. They have proven their worth over decades and decades of service, certainly twenty-three years in the region, twelve-plus years at war, they have shown their merit. I think sometimes the biggest challenge we have sometime with our leadership in the enlisted force is closing the communication out. So, I think we're very open to their ideas. We do solicit their input on things, but sometimes we don't close it out. And General Welsh has been working this all the way from the air staff down to actually solicit those ideas, and then force ourselves to kind of close that out. So, sometimes it is about taking that idea and saying, you know what, that makes perfect sense, and we should be doing it. It makes common sense, we can fix the AFI. Sometimes it comes back in explaining to that airmen that does have this idea exactly why we can't do that. And sometimes that's the piece that we don't close the gap on. We don't come back and really give them the time to say, hey, we heard what you had to say, this is exactly why we're doing it, this may be why we can't do what you're asking us to do right now, but it might be something we can do in the future. I think that's the piece that I think we can really kind of capitalize on doing a little bit better.
That airmen may come forward with ten or twenty different ideas, and you may only implement one of them. But if you make them feel like you're not interested in hearing their idea on the first one, you'll never get to that game-changing idea. So, the idea is, keep the communication going, make people feel comfortable expressing their views, make them part of the solution, make them feel like they are. You can do that, we can do anything.
Thank you, sir, thank you, chief.
Debbie Salvy, I'm the Cadet Support Flight Chief here at the academy. So, as a career civilian, I'm proud to serve, and I'm very proud that I work for you, Chief of Staff of the Air Force. But I'm very lucky, because I work here at the academy, and I see you, and I hear you, and I hear your message. So, what are you doing to ensure that the rest of the civilians in the Air Force hear the same message that I'm hearing? Your civilians with a capital A, your airmen with a capital A.
Well, a couple of things that we're trying to do, and it's not just me, by the way, it's every senior leader of our Air Force needs to have the same message. Starting with our secretary, who does. He's been traveling all over the Air Force as fast as he can, and talking to civilians everywhere he goes. We're putting stuff out on social media. I'm on Facebook and Twitter, guys, follow me. I'm learning, I'm not very good at this yet. But he's, he is, we're trying to put articles out, we're trying to put information on Air Force link, we're trying to do anything we can, and get our senior leaders around the Air Force, on the officer and the enlisted side, and our civilian leadership, to make sure that the message is being shared. This isn't going very well for us, by the way. As a corporate entity, we don't communicate very well, because we've never figured out how to get to every level. So, that's why we're trying all these new things now, and see what works. Our civilian workforce has been put in a horrible position over the last several years, not just this year. For the last three years, there were no pay raises, while the active-duty military, the uniformed military was getting them. And then the reward for that, and all their continued efforts, was furlough, and then government shutdown. I feel that this is a breach of faith with our civilian workforce. And we've been very clear that that's the way the secretary and I both feel. We have got to stop this being an approach we're willing to take as a government. We have got to come up with a better solution, or we will lose our great civilian workforce, and that will break our Air Force. Just like with guard, reserve, and active components, we've got to have civilian airmen to be successful. They're at the core of everything we do. We owe you better than what we've given you over the last year.
Thank you, sir. Twenty-eight years, but I'm still proud to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question to follow up for that. Will you two be accepting friend requests from cadets anytime soon?
Yeah, I don't accept friend requests, ever. But come on, take a look. What we're trying to do is use the sites to inform people about what's going on. The reason I don't, by the way, is right now, there are about fourteen active Facebook sites that are supposedly mine. And OSI's tired of working so hard to close them all down, so, every time we accept a friend request, it gets worse, they get more information.
Thank you, sir.
General Welsh, Chief Cody, my name is Katie Dunkleberger. I'm from Cadet Squadron Nine, and thank you for being here today to answer our questions. My question relates to the earlier question about multi-role platforms versus single. And my question is, why are we only looking at the F-35 to replace the F-15, the F-16, and the A-10? Should we be concerned with that lack of diversification and the problems that could arise from it?
Yeah, there's problems, depending, whichever strategy you take has problems. Whether you want multiple types of airplanes, which cost huge money for infrastructure, different logistical change, supply chains, different types of support equipment, the bill is enormous. Most of the bill on an airplane is not in operating it, it's in maintaining it. And the more types of airplanes you have, the more infrastructure you have to have to maintain it. Everything from depots to age equipment on the flight line. And so, the Air Force, a while back, made the decision that we would replace the F-15s with the F-22, and we would replace the F-16 and the A-10 with the F-35, and a portion of the F-15e fleet. Now, this is going to take a long time. We're going to have multiple airplanes in our fleet for the next thirty years. So, this is not going to be a dramatic change, and hopefully by that time, we'll be building another airplane. So, it won't be that limited of a fleet. The reason the F-35 is so important is because of the fifth-generation technology it brings. Its ability to operate against an air threat that has better capability than anything we currently fly today, and an ability to operate in an integrated air defense environment that our airplanes today will not survive in. A very simple fact of the matter is, that if a fourth-generation airplane, like our legacy fleet, meets a fifth-generation airplane, it dies. legacy fleet, meets a fifth-generation airplane, it dies. It's that simple. And so we have to have the fifth-generation capability in order to provide air superiority because we cut short our F-22 buy, we don't have enough of them to do it on a theater scale. We have to have it to attack the new integrated air defense systems. We have to have it to do the daddy integration problems we have in the future battlespace. There's no option. If we could start another airplane, other than the F-35, and have it done in five years, maybe you could do that. But that's impossible with our current process. So the F-35 is a necessity for our Air Force. It's at the top of our recapitalization priorities for operational reasons. And it makes perfect sense from an operational perspective. But that's why we are where we are.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
And, sir, as a follow-up to that, when can the class of 2014 expect to be sitting in the cockpit of an F-35?
I don't think we have any pilot slots for you guys. That's why we delay giving your assignments. We are delivering F-35s right now. We just flew our 2,000 sortie in the F-35, so it's not a PowerPoint briefing, guys, it's flying. Last time I was at Eglin Air Force Base, I landed a force ship flew overhead. I mean, these are real airplanes. There's real Air Force pilots and other service pilots flying them today. We will have initial operational capability, meaning we have a squadron capable of deploying to a fight if necessary by December of 2016. And so it's not that far away, but they're going to be delivered for the next 25, 30 years. So there'll be a lot of F-35s here, as long as we can keep the program on track, which is why we have a funding prioritization to do just that.
Yes, sir.
You guys will get there.
And our final question comes from Cadet Jones.
General Welsh, Chief Cody, this is a question for both of you. Sir, my name is Cadet Third Class Stephen Jones from CS-21. And a few years ago, in your speech in 2011, you referenced a young staff sergeant who's trying to work the system for custody of his daughter.